Mary Weiss.
Yes. I'm going to be through the maze. It's great to see everyone here, which is like this every month. I'm representing the Bridgeville Area Historical Society. For your information council, it is not safe to cross the railroad street crossing for pedestrians. They've come around that bend.
Which one? Up by this building?
Up by the building where we are. The old railroad station. Cars coming this way or this way, make the turn fast. If you're there, walk there. Just pointing, we go down the alley that's kind of across from that building. Illegally, but safe for us.
Do you think we should walk in building that crosswalk back?
Well, I'll talk to the committee on that.
What was it, Mary?
I'm sorry?
From the old library.
Yeah. An old railroad building with a crossing off practically in the intersection. And anyone making a turn, putting their foot on the gas system and they won't.
No, we're actually, you can tell that they're very light and we're going to be in the midst of repairing those. So we can check with the chief of public safety to see if we can realign any of that.
The Historical Society has come a long way since 2001. We have a website up, running, adding, growing. Look it up, it's interesting. Visitors this summer from all over the United States. Two different families from Arizona, one from Texas and he's coming back and he followed as he wanted it. Two from South Carolina, two from Philadelphia. And it's a long list, but that gives you an idea that they're coming in from all over the country to see what we do and what we have. Phone calls, an interesting one last week was a man from Arizona. He was born here in 1955. He wants copies of photographs of everything that's changed since 1955. And we have responded to him and explained that to him. We are all volunteers, it takes time and fun. I do want to mention to you that if you read the Bridgeville area news a couple weeks ago, when John Weyers column about CPMR seniors brickworks, what all he went through to get patents to develop the mayor's, the bricks that were used, the CPMR bricks. Copy that has been sent to his directorship members who are friends of him. Come see us, come see our flower dance. Thanks to Home Depot for that one. We're looking forward to working on the caboose, making it half railroad memorabilia. So anyone out there who has railroad memorabilia, please bring it in. We also want to do the other half in area sports. So we need a little bit more information for the girls' soccer team to be in. Two of our girls from Bridgeville participated. One of the things historians find is question marks, the missing pieces in a puzzle. One of them on James Street, across from the post office. Are five company houses. They were there in 1912 when my grandfather came here. Who built them? Why? Was it the railroad? Was it the coal company? The steel company didn't come in until 1903 or '05 or '07? Then, last week I did the tour of St. Peter's Street. There on the right side going up to the turnaround, there are a minimum, minimum of 12 company roadhouses. Who? This is kind of insulting. But we are there Thursday, Tuesday, I see Thursday and Friday, I'm there Tuesday and Friday. We're there from 10 till 2 or later. But please, you're all welcome, come in to see what we do. There's a lot of interesting stuff going on. And some of my members here tonight testified, one of our visitors, how interesting it all is. So please, take advantage, stop in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Bob Prior.
Hi, Bob, how are you doing? I was gonna say, I have a decent life there. A couple important things. Just remember the last time, we talked about the Fast Force Plan and how some of us, some of you guys weren't really pleased. It primarily was widening Charter Street for 300 yards. Having two lanes come down Charter's to go across the bridge and to go this way. And we surfed over, it's important to get four lanes going up to South Bay. But I wanted to show you, which I was sort of surprised to find, is these green drawings are the ones that were done by PBE. Schuffler, yeah. And I had forgotten, they already had the four lanes going up through there. Someone mentioned that and I thought I would have stated. But what I'm trying to point out is, I'm assuming Schuffler, PBE did this based on some sort of fundamental cat, traffic mounts, or just their feelings that it has to be wider and that the present version of the Fast Force Plan is that and that. The other thing I wanted to mention to you was, this drawing, which I'll give you guys a copy of, that's the Starlight Theater in South Bay. The way it's, this is the UPMC Children's Hospital. This is, they're going to put, they, the county sold the property for I think four or five million dollars. Now they're gonna use the money to build this municipal building or a different place. But the important thing is, this is going to be a hotel, some retail shops, a bank, something else. But I wanted to show you that, to give you an idea how enormous the traffic level is going to be on one side of the South Bay and Bridgeville. We've got to make sure it's not rates and not much for ten years. And one other thing. This is the bridge over Charter's Creek, and that's, was it correct? Mike Benton and other people on the Fast Force seem to agree that seven lane wide bridge here is peaceful. They seem to like the idea because that is Bridgeville, two lanes, two lanes coming in from South Bay and two lanes going out. But one of the problems has always been, as people on the survey have told me, and I'll show you in a second, is when you're coming out of Bridgeville and you want to take a left turn through Charter Street, one car stopping to make that left turn ties up the whole block of cars behind it. But when you take the seven lane bridge and you run these lines straight across, there's a missing line. This dotted line right here is the existing, it's the present curve on that side of the street there. Curve, Charter Street, curve. By simply moving that over 12 feet, taking it down to zero at the Charter Street intersection, you create a left turn stacking lane here. And you don't have to touch Bethany Church's property at all, it's perfect. The only thing that it does is, it lines up all these lanes. For example, the left hand spacking lane going up Charter Street is in perfect alignment with what I, we assume is going to be a left turn stacking lane going into Aldis. It's blocked everybody coming out of Bridgeville. I just wanted you to be aware of it. I'll give you a copy of this. One final thing I wanted to show you is, a couple of weeks ago, we gave out 200 copies of the traffic survey for the people in two of the churches in Bridgeville. And we got 200 copies back. And these are, and by the way, I dropped this off on Pendot, Stan Sessom, the thing owner of the system. And they told me that we got almost 50% return, was remarkable. They said, well, April, you get like 5 or 10%. But this is a copy of the 200 people, there are about 20 of them that made special comments saying, saying how bad they are with the traffic congestion stop in Bridgeville, stop the border line there. So you guys, Lori, I even make copies of this. And I don't know if you saw that drawing, that drawing about Schuffler.
That's the first time I've seen that.
Yeah, first time I've seen it. Anyway, I have nothing else to say, I just, I'd like, I'd like to conclude by saying, it's, as we all know, the most important decision any of you guys are going to make in the next 30 years is going to be getting Washington Avenue built wide enough between Bridgeville and up through South Bay. So that it's the beginning of the widening of that road up through there that will get us out of the traffic congestion. It's the time of the economic development so much, place to create a taxidermy on people.
Thanks, Bob. Frank and Cece.
Hello. This last month we, because we had, it was fun. I'm sorry. I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to follow up on what we talked about two months ago, about the vehicles parked on the residential streets on Mill Street and in around the intersection of the Baldwin Road, that there was a possibility that Mr. Gallerbucci's establishment, his grandfather from Earl Ordinance 649 in state law section, code section 3712. And I wanted to know, focus on that.
As far as the, if it was ground, you saw it outside, you ordered it on Mirage.
Control source is a parking area on Baldwin Street. That was horizontal. And then the existing, the existing, the existing, the one east on.
That was reasonable, my God, I haven't reexamined the safeguards, the whatever, the decisions, all those only decisions.
Well, that's, that was one thing.
Right.
But the cars that have been parking there for many, many years, are they existing on, on this house's business does? Which has been right there before it was done.
I haven't been asked to go to the town. Can you answer a question?
Okay, well, just to let you know, I did do a little bit of research. And the ordinance 649, it's from 1974, so it's not a lot big to existing. And if I can remember correctly, before 22, was 22, it was a funeral home, it was Wolf's funeral home. And I grew up in this area, I know, I grew up on the other side of the hill in Upper St. Clair, so I'm not with Bridgeville. But I do know what was there, and I do know that it was clean and clear because there was a funeral home there and they needed parking and they needed for it to look like a decent establishment. And I do, Bruce, I do appreciate the efforts that you've made in cleaning up. Don't think that the neighborhood hasn't noticed, because we have, and we do appreciate that. But there's still, I mean, there's an issue with the vehicles that are still on Mill Street that haven't moved for a very long time. And I looked up section, was it ordinance 3712? It's a Pennsylvania legal code that ordinance 649 references. And it says, "It is unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to dump, store, or accumulate, junk, or abandon the junked vehicles or other vehicles on private or public property within the borough of Bridgeville." The police department is supposed to enforce this. Enforcement is not to exceed $1,000 in costs. And every day that the violation continues is considered a separate offense, which is kind of, you know.
It's part of our business.
But it's, well, I understand that, I understand.
No, you don't, because you don't understand.
No, I do understand that, I do understand that. But I know that when the funeral home was there.
It was, it's better now than it's ever been.
No, I live here, I know, it wasn't like that.
I lived there too.
And.
I lived there for 28 years.
Well, that's not, but there's this law on the books that, you know, we're supposed to all follow, whether it's a person or a corporation.
I might just pick that out, and I will, look at the situation as requested. I think we're citing the section of property maintenance, general property maintenance.
It also says public property, public street.
Again, that goes back to specific kind of wrong question that goes to private cases when it's grandfather. However, in isolation, raising your question, not if it's part of his business, but a business of that type generally, and the application of that sort of ordinance, that's not meant to apply to the ongoing business which is engaged in the business of repairing cars and may have cars and vehicles for certain money. All I'm saying is.
I agree with you, these vehicles have not moved in years. You know, there are vehicles that have not moved in years, that there's accumulated garbage underneath of them. And I understand, you can slap a plate on them anytime and make them legal. The state may disagree with you on that. And I understand you're running your business. No, we appreciate that you're starting to clean things up. But there's the issue of property value, there's also the safety issue. We have, we don't even have Main Street connected yet. And we already have crazy traffic from Upper St. Clair screaming down Main Street, down Mill, down past your place, and down Baldwin. And with all those cars taking up all that room, you know, I don't know if it's an issue of parking, of not parking, of following the law, the letter of the law. But we gotta do something because if it looks like it's some kind of hole, no one in Upper St. Clair is going to take us seriously. And they already think we're a joke and they can just fly through our neighborhoods. And it's an issue of safety and it's an issue of decency and where we live. You know, the fact that 15 of my neighbors said, isn't it awesome that Bruce put up a fence and mulch? And they're happy. You know, that's sad. We shouldn't have.
Ask Lori how long I tried to put that fence up there. It cost me $6 a month to put that fence up, before I put the fence in, in labor fees.
What, because the borough is stopping you from putting up the fence?
In its, let me defend that, in its insanity, in its difficulty, you are not permitted to put a fence that high up.
You were.
Yeah, you were not allowed to put a fence up, right Lori?
You were not, you are permitted now.
Yes, only after a great deal of work from Lori and others changed that law.
Well, and that's, that's all well and good. But you know, when you look back at the history of that intersection and these problems, there's definitely an issue with the old borough council dropping the ball. The last borough lawyer totally dropping the ball and not filing paperwork.
That's not true.
Yeah, it's, I've read it. It's a matter of legal record, it's written in English, it's available for the public, and I've read it. And I know that the last solicitor, Richard Ferris, missed the date and because he didn't file paperwork in time, you won by default. It's there in black and white.
We had, we had an hearing, you called up police court.
Then I'll bring it next time and I'll bring it to you. Because I know what I read. You know, I'm capable of reading English.
I know what I went through.
And if the borough, if the borough was making him jump through hoops to hide the garbage behind there, then shame on the borough. Because we should be helping him to make the neighborhood look good. You know, the fact that you don't advertise that you sell gas. Bruce, if you advertise that you sell gas, people are going to stop and sell gas. When I Google "gas station," because I didn't know you still sold gas, honestly, I didn't know that. If you Google "gas station," your place doesn't come up. No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. I checked the price, because it comes up with the price as well.
Well, I'm not price checking, I'm looking for, somebody, somebody doesn't price check. Then I'll look at it again. But when we looked at it just last week, nothing was coming up. You know, if it's a matter of your business thriving, if you advertise that you sell gas, if you have the big sign out there that says, "Gas for sale and here's the price," people are going to stop and buy gas, and that's going to improve your bottom line. Which hopefully will improve the way the business looks. But you know, there are several vehicles, and I'll take pictures and take pretty descriptions and tags that have not moved for over a year and a half. And that, you know, that's not acceptable. I understand what your business is, and everybody loves what you do, you do great work. But we're all in this together, we're all in the neighborhood together. So it's about decency, safety, and parking, though. And I thank you all for your time and dedication.
I want to read that, it's one of your topics, I think things got a little heated on an electable, an electable repair down our street. I want to try to address this, a larger issue of utility companies, utility companies respond, they change the business. I go from a point of reference, my dad used to run a consulting company. He was hired by one of the power companies to do a survey of an area where they have a service because they had to have a product that produced the PUC that they were doing customer service. I also was a business where as a project manager, we had a ton of subcontractors. There's a service, there's a new business model out there for utilities. That you used to be, they would respond to people that they had hired. They now have a ton more subcontractors. So you've got a lag in, if they don't respond, there's profit. It's what's an emergency, what's not an emergency, we're going to respond nine to five. And I understand the consumer, maybe we're just going to be out there on our own. But when it's, a power outage is going to, is hitting a large population of the area, I just want to know where the council, if they have something to contribute. Because I also don't want to waste your time here, but there's a larger issue that all the communities need to be aware of. And when you go out, I understand, you used to have a more solid thing of, there's an unsold solid flood emergency coming around, and I have a minor power outage where an entire community was out. And I don't think we count on that information. I think they have a ton of subcontractors, and they're just not responding because it's going to cost them money. And they're not from here anymore. And there might be a larger issue as we get more, especially if we're going to get the water issue. And I'm sorry, got out again the last time, but that's really what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get, and I don't want to task you guys on there. But there's a larger issue of, if there is, if you're going to be road, you know, we have a water center down there. If you're going to have road decay, the lumber goes on, it could have been a quick fix, and they.
How long did the water run, two days? They did a terrible job last year, they need to remember that.
I don't think that they've done a passion.
I hope not.
One of the issues with that is they call us, when they call us whatever, they send somebody out to show them what they have on. And then they gauge where they have a break that's larger. And we had another one that ran and ran, and then, and then it got bigger and bigger too.
But I took pictures of the original, and it started to crack into the road surface. And by the time they actually came back to fix it, we lost like eight foot of solid uninterrupted asphalt. So they need to fix that, you know.
I agree, I just think that what their knock was 20 years ago, so it's priority. And they respond to normal service calls, is down here and that cover is solid. And I don't think it's a general.
Thank you.
We have a little control. Do agree. Tom Druckus.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, you did, thanks. Tom Druckus, I bought a building a couple years ago on Baldwin Street, it's up to Baldwin Street. And always had free parking. You know, basically the bend, which is about halfway point on Baldwin Street, down all the way on that one side. So, you know, there's my business, which, or my building, which has two businesses in it. And in the last year and a half or so, the dog boarding place opened up, Canine Club. They opened up and they have people coming and going all day long. The, I understand, after speaking with Pat, that there was some ordinance on the books that said that there was no parking on that side for some inexplicable reason, probably ancient history that that was done back when maybe Baldwin Street was the main street. The parking right there, from the bend all the way down, it's dead straight. The street is wide and it gets traffic, but it doesn't get traffic like Baurhill Road. Baurhill Road is, you know, monog, most people use that road. The random one or two cars that come down the street every so often are completely free to go up and down that street. So the parking should absolutely be there. And, you know, so I don't know exactly how it all transpired. This is my first meeting I've been to, so I'm sure there was some back and forth on, we got to enforce this ordinance. So let's put up signs. Well, our business, all the residents there that basically are used to parking, parking is a major issue, you know, emotional. Because, you know, parking in front of my building and walking, you know, 30, 40 feet into my front door in the winter, raining, it's, it's pretty easy to do. My father, over here, Tom Druckus, works there as well. And if he is forced to park in the line, you know, maybe 200 feet away, he's a little bit older, has a bum leg. Okay, so, you know, from a standpoint of ease, just personally and selfishly, it makes it much better if we just have free parking on that stretch. Because I don't think it's a safety issue. The other thing I want to say about safety is unintended consequences. When you have cars parked down that street, it automatically invariably slows traffic down on that street. If there's no cars parked there, it is a wide open freeway. Okay? And, you know, so, you know, that's one unintended consequence. The other unintended consequence is, both my business, the Canine Club, and the business that's leasing space from me, we have a lot of clients coming to go. All those clients are coming from a distance. So I know my clients, when they come to see me, typically it's, you know, we do some business and then we head out for lunch. Okay? Makes it nice and easy for them to have free parking. I'd hate to go to lunch and come back and have them have a ticket. Bad for business. Number two, my tenant, those clients are coming from even further away in many respects. I guarantee you that a lot of those clients, when they get to Bridgeville, they buy gas at one of the gas stations locally and buy lunch somewhere. On Baldwin Street perhaps. At least if they knew we had gas there. But, but no, I mean, long story short, the ordinance needs changed. It's one of those things where it's like, you know, unintended consequences, ease of use, it's a, you know, it's a good street. And I just think that not having free parking not only impacts my business, but it impacts the residents that have houses there. Thank you, that's all I can say.
Francis Waller, Waller.
Waller.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the K.
I didn't know I was going to be talking with my son, so it's all good. I came on behalf of the Eagles. Nick and Michelle Eagle, here is her name. So I've been a resident of Bridgeville for 10 years and I'm a next door neighbor. And by the way, I absolutely agree with you, with the whole situation with the parking and abandoning. It's really, really difficult, something like that. I have a next door neighbor who has a car that hasn't worked. I can't even get out of my driveway. It's like right there. There's not a horse in that house. You know, it just lives there. It's actually the third or fifth car that is out there, and nobody says anything.
What's your, what's your address?
Gray Avenue.
You know what, if I could, I hadn't just, I don't want to interrupt anything, but I just want to propose to know that code enforcement matters, and you're certainly welcome. We're required to keep a non-miscuit compliance. So if you wish not to come on, you want to make a call to Mrs. Collins at the business office, they're happy to take that component, they will log and reveal.
That's fine, I just wanted to make a point that I agree with what she was saying. It's important, you know, I want my street to look nice, I want abandoned vehicles. And, I'm sorry, you know, I really, I just wanted to say. So Mrs. Eagle was wondering where the street cleaners were. We haven't seen one at all.
Well, the street sweeper is only out the third full week of the month, from May through August. So.
She says she has not seen one since, you know how she is.
I mean, I can check with our.
In fact, I can tell you they haven't been out because there's grass going through the break. And if you keep the street clean, it doesn't continue there.
Okay, well, they're, they're supposed to be there once a month. So I will talk to, or a gentleman, I, I know he has it out because I see him, I see him out driving. So if he's missing that street, I don't know why. I'll double check and see why he hasn't been out there.
Has he actually been out?
Oh, yes, he's out, he's out on the third full week of the month. And then he's out every Wednesday to do the business district. So yes, he has been out, and I'll check on Gray. And I see why he hasn't been out.
I have just one more question. Is there any planning at all, so getting any money from the state to be to Main Street, the main street from here?
That's not our road.
Right, it's the state street, so is there any plans?
I'm not sure what the schedule.
I've actually talked to Pendot about what their plans are with some of the paving. They're getting ready to pave Washington Avenue, it's pretty bad up here. That's probably going to be starting in the next few weeks, and what I'm doing that is nice. Then the next street probably will be the Baldwin Run Road within the borough because that's in very good shape too. As far as Main Street goes, I'm not sure when it's on their schedule, I'm sure it is. And I can find out when. But I know Washington Avenue and the Baldwin Run, the state streets are the next two that are going to be.
I just think that this is such an important street in. I just think that this is such an important street, and, you know, we want Bridgeville to be nice and clean. I mean, that street is actually becoming worse as it comes. And they came and they did those patches, and it just kind of looks ghoulish. Kind of like my, I mean, I'm not originally from here, but I love Bridgeville. I can see it coming back to life, I just don't, you know, everybody drives through here. So we just want, I feel like that's the entrance to Bridgeville, from that side, from this side. So we just want it to look nice, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. F. P. Schrock?
I have the dance studio on Baldwin Street. And in a perfect world, I would have my own parking lot, but I don't. And because of my location, I'm able to charge way low prices. Then the big fancy dance studios with the wonderful lots and their wrought iron fences. But then there's a lot of little local girls that their families would not be able to afford a dance experience. So I'm very content with where I am. And I've been there for almost thirty years on Baldwin Street, and I've never really had a problem. I rent off of the Ops Club, and there is a parking lot across the street. But sometimes when they're busy, there's not even room for me to park in there. And that's fine, I just park on the street, that's no problem. I have four and five-year-olds, their parents are bringing them. And when, when someone involves at my studio, I, they ask where to park. And I always tell them, you're going to be staying for a long time, park in meter parking across from Tamponini's. Those meters shut off at six o'clock, it's a short walk down. And if you're just dropping off, being there for a short period of time, there's pawn street parking. And I'm there maybe nine hours a week. I have students coming, a total of nine hours a week. That, I'm losing ten to twelve parking places, that's huge for me. It's never been a problem before. At the end of the day, I get to go home and park, and so do my parents, get to park in their parking lots, in their parking places, in their garages, in their driveways. People of Baldwin Street have been my neighbors. We've watched each other go through hell and high water. They don't deserve this, they don't deserve this.
I try, I try to stay there.
Okay, they should have the right to park. And I know you're trying to get people to park in the wonderful Parking Authority lots and pay the permits. They shouldn't have to do that.
I agree.
I care for them more than I am for me.
I appreciate that.
Now, as far as the parking on Baldwin Street, now, it was, it was an ordinance on the books. I believe that the public safety committee was going to look at it. It wasn't something, it's been on the books for a long time, but it was never really enforced. And it was brought to our attention, and we kind of, Public Safety was going to look at it to see, should we do something or not? Bill, as, I mean, we, I mean, as far as what we were going to do, I don't think it was an urgent thing to start. It was, we were going to leave it, leave it go for...
Right, we, parking has been, as you said, thirty years. It's been like that, now there are a lot of problems. It was brought to our attention that some folks wanted to eliminate that parking. So the committee got together, and the committee, three people made up the committee, agreed that parking should remain the way it was, and remove the no parking that was posted there. We did not feel this was an urgent nature to, to do that right away, because nothing had changed. And Mr. Mayor made a decision to begin to enforce that after that Public Safety meeting. So that is why you're all here, whether you're here to support it or not support it, that's why you're all here. I can tell you, I have in my committee a report, a motion to, to change the ordinance. So if we do that now...
Yeah, no, that's the worst we're going to go through, I just want, before we start getting, you know, people coming up and getting emotional by it, one kind of feasible, so if you can.
Kay Truzzi?
Well, being careful, Tom, address that parking situation of the downtown. How about you control what the speed on that street? I bet you, around forty, fifty miles an hour, and that's it, and that's it, so it's going to be around there. It's a road trap, which I don't know, there are a few people that are advised by the speed limit. On these days, there's all kids that show up on the street, you know, big dogs, because it is a road trap. How do we stop that? I'm going to see anybody, maybe you're ticked us, one lady down there, you know, just... I'd say that's an instance, but some has to be done by the speed. I'd very good then.
Joel Angus?
I just want to thank the borough for fixing the bridge road. Thank you very much.
Sure, that's it?
That's it, I tell you, playing on Baldwin Street. So what the borough's trying to do, they, they hear you, but what they're trying to do is they're, they want to make Baldwin Street nice. They want to fix that street up. And they thought that, I guess certain people thought, they're going to butt back to rules and trying to fix things a certain way would, would do that. And there are a lot of people who live down there, and they need the parking, and that's understandable. But I see a lot of cars parked down there that should be in the paved parking lot to work at the restaurant or on that corner, they should be somewhere else. So they pull out that corner up, and it's hard to get through sometimes, and then the main, my main big deal is trucks that park for the restaurants there, or the alleys. If they need to unload their trucks, they should be off to the side in the parking lot, not pulling out that little road there. That's a thruway, that's not an unloading zone or loading zone. So if an emergency vehicle can easily get it to get through it, or not be able to get through it, so that's just my part.
Yes, thank you, Joel. Mike Dunn?
I agree with the parking on Baldwin Street.
And Rachel, Caddis?
Caddis, I say the name, Baldwin Street.
All right. That's it for visitors, thank you very much, I appreciate you guys all coming down. You know, it is something that we are definitely aware of, and we're going to talk about it more as we move along. Business part of me, thank you very much. Minutes. Motion of Borough Council regarding the minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen workshop meeting as submitted. So, Bill and Bruce, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Motion of Borough Council regarding the minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen public hearing as submitted. So move Bruce and Bill Truzzi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Motion of Borough Council regarding the minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen regular meeting as submitted. Bill, Truzzi, and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Proposal draft zoning ordinance advertising. Motion of Borough Council authorizing solicitor and staff to advertise for public hearing in consideration the proposed draft zoning ordinance amendments as recommended by the planning commission. The draft document will be provided for the review of council prior to the public hearing. Jason and Bruce. Current estimate number three, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Current estimate number three, two thousand fifteen point repair project. Motion of Borough Council regarding the remit of current estimate number three, two thousand fifteen one repair project of soilite construction in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and fifteen cents for work completed to date. Estimates have been reviewed by engineers sites. Bruce and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Current estimate number two, two thousand fifteen CCTV project. Motion of Borough Council regarding the remit of current estimate number two, two thousand fifteen CCTV project to get site pipe, the amount of seven thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents for work completed to date. Estimates have been reviewed by engineers sites. So, Jason and Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero five. Motion of Borough Council regarding resolution number two thousand fourteen dash zero five as per Pendot. Requirements, one point, one zero point one four, signs and banners across state highways. Resolution designating the intention of Saint George Church to place one banner across State Route fifty to be installed September fourth, two thousand fifteen, and removed October sixth, two thousand fifteen for the Mediterranean Food Festival to be held October second to fourth, two thousand fifteen. So move Bruce and, I'm sorry, Bill Henderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Bill List, motion of Borough Council approving the two thousand fifteen Bill List. So move Bruce and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Payrolls, motion of Borough Council approving the payrolls of August fourteenth, twenty-one, twenty-eight, and September fourth, and September eleventh, two thousand fifteen. So move Bruce and Jake, Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Monthly reports, motion to accept and pay any commissions due to the July two thousand fifteen real estate tax collector report. So move Bruce and Bill Truzzi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Motion to accept the June two thousand fifteen financial report. So move Bruce and Bill Truzzi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Motion to accept the July two thousand fifteen police report. So move, who was that? Bill Henderson and, second by Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Motion to accept the July two thousand fifteen zoning report. So move, Bill Henderson and Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Community reports, administration, Bruce, no reports, sir, no report. Finance, Nino is in Italy. So, I don't know, he won't plan for four years, he must be... I don't think he wants to hear it, he's...
He's fifteen euros.
He's been in Italy for six hours, so his Italian, his English is probably really bad, so... Parks and Rec, Jason?
Real quick, baseball season coming around, and they're ready for home ball. Parks look good, it's grass has been grown, it's been kind of, they're free.
That's it, all right, thank you, Jason. Public Works, Bill Truzzi?
Yeah, they started dredging the creek on the Glockland.
No, they did not, they did not dredge the creek.
Move some stuff, just moving, moving stuff against the wall.
Fairly. If you want to get in, you don't involve street, you want to get in and fix your wall, there's a lot of time to do it. You know, go in, put some concrete, raise your walls up on Baldwin side, while we can get in here and help us side a lot with the flood. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Phil. Public Safety, go ahead.
Yeah, like, two things really, first of all, briefly, on the Baldwin Run Road, we had an area where we have some parking pits. We have a public safety hazard. Lori has honored our request to send the resident, or the homeowners there, a notification that they're going to need to move their vehicles and not park there. So we're addressing that situation that was brought to our attention. And the other one is Baldwin Street. Let me just state that, you know, as a committee, we met, and we've been meeting and discussing not just Baldwin Street, but other areas in the community where ordinances that were made years ago don't necessarily fit today's world. And in a situation like Baldwin Street, there are families that have two, three, four cars now, where maybe back then it was one car. Parking is, you know, very difficult to come by in this, in this community. So we sympathize with the homeowners on Baldwin Street, and it has been our intention all along to, to change that ordinance, and we are being rushed to do that tonight. And we will do it in a form of motion, like.
On behalf of Public Safety Committee, I'd like to make a motion to amend the parking ordinance currently in place on Baldwin Street to read as following. Parking will be permitted on the south end, west side of Baldwin Street, beginning at six eighteen Baldwin Street and running through six 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 Baldwin Street. And for some clarification, it's where it's currently permitted, it basically doesn't change on that side. It does add some language to indicate that it stops at six 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 Baldwin Street, because currently it reads, you could park all the way up to the Baldwin Run Road. So maybe we want the ordinance to read that you cannot do that. Parking will be permitted on the north end, east side of Baldwin Street, beginning at six oh seven Baldwin Street, and running twenty feet prior to the intersection of Jane Way or the exit of the beer distributor, where that parking lot is. So twenty feet back from that exit, we would like that to be marked, no parking. So there is a sight line for not coming traffic when you're exiting there.
Already marked.
Pardon me?
There's already no parking.
It needs to be painted and marked.
I have a question.
Yes.
Should, should we park zigzag or just facing the flood?
Yeah, we would like you to park with traffic, and one of the other things we talked about on the sidewalk. Yeah, no cars parking on the sidewalk. Currently, if you do go down there, you will see cars parked up on the sidewalk. That has always been illegal to do so. And, and, you know, what we're asking is that we will begin to enforce that. If cars are parked illegally on the sidewalk, that is a safety issue, we will begin to enforce that.
Just one minor point of the curb.
Yeah.
Where they mark on the sidewalk, there's, the curb's almost non-existent right there. So I think, you know, people just pull in, the first car is on the curb, the next car is on the curb. So the sign needs to be clearly stated, or that curb should be raised to the normal size.
And we will use good common sense in enforcing that, obviously, the chief has done that already.
I'm curious, in the audience, are there any people that are parking on that sidewalk or that think there's a reason that they need to? We couldn't, we couldn't figure that out. There's no reason that you should be.
No.
Okay, because there seem to be, as Tom said, a pattern, if one person parked there, everybody followed.
Yeah.
And if one person, today was one of the few exceptions, saw one guy parked on the sidewalk, and the rest of the cars weren't. So we couldn't fi, we have not been able to figure out why that is. And if anyone in the audience can tell us...
I actually have my, an answer. People park on the sidewalk on Mill Street, which is ridiculous. So it's almost like, you can park on the sidewalk and nobody's going to enforce it, because it's like not our legal law in Bridgeville.
Which, yeah, we can, I understand, but just looking at Baldwin Street.
But that's, but Mill goes through, but it's the same area, everybody does it.
I can give you the answer. Because I pull into that parking lot, there's some, Mr. Davis, I swing out and I pull down, and I use the pull as my guide, telephone pull that's sitting there. And I don't park on the sidewalk. So if I'm not parked on the sidewalk, the, the other cars are generally, they may work different shifts or, you know, things of that nature. And I noticed after I pulled in, everybody else pulls it straight as on cars. Yes. Yeah, that's the habit.
But what I've noticed lately is people were parking against traffic. I don't know whether that's been a protest or...
Just one comment on parking against traffic. Yeah, I know that that's...
I've seen it in front of your place several times, yes.
The reason I do it is actually safe. Because if I'm parking with traffic, I have to get out into the street, as opposed to getting out on the sidewalk, and usually I'm carrying something.
Everybody does.
Right, well, plus, the other, the other thing is, is I come into Baldwin Street typically from the Tamponini's side. And as I'm coming in, I would then have to make like a three-point... from the Tamalini side, and as I'm coming in, I would then have to make like a 3.2 in the parking lot.
I guess you're getting excited.
No matter where you live, if you drive, if you drive a car, you have to get out of the door and turn.
Mr. Orr.
Thank you. I just have, I don't understand. If Mr. Henderson had, your safety had, that you wanted to change it, then why did Bridgeville spend tax money making signs, having Public Works put the signs up, and then take the signs down? Meanwhile, you have the Chief of Police writing warning tickets. I don't get it. It seems like a total waste of taxpayers' money for no reason. You're going to move the signs to another place and start all over again?
I agree with you.
Save the signs.
I agree with you. The committee had it, and, and everyone that was in that meeting knew the intentions of this committee. It was not our decision to erect signs and enforce that. Someone else made that decision. Mr. Orr, if you'd like to press it.
Is there anybody that thinks that street isn't a little bit narrow? Like, I do have to stop when I see the other person pass, when I like a truck is coming past. I can't really keep driving. You've got to kind of find a gap where someone's parking pull over, let them pass and then you tell them. I mean, it's a little narrow. I just want people to buy cars. Because it is... Well, it's, it's pickup trucks too. Anybody bigger than my little car, I kind of have to stop and pull over.
I've seen three cars float down the road with no law.
Well, the road is 28 feet from sidewalk to side. Is that right enough for two-way traffic?
Oh, yeah.
But there's probably a rule. I mean, with...
That's funny, I mentioned, we're, we're trying to 320 to 30 foot section, so... Greg's all answers.
It's, this issue has been on the table for about a year and a half. It's been discussed as a topic for the last two to three months' length. Public Safety met before the last council meeting. The councils have no action. You hear the debate and the juxtaposition, differing viewpoints. So what you have are some people saying we should do this, some people saying we should do that. We should have parking, we shouldn't have parking, parking on the sidewalks, parking different ways. There are three ordinances out there, and I think you're going to address all three, right? So we have individual people coming and asking for action. Now, the question is, our solicitor once said to me, did you mean it? Did you mean it when you passed a law that said, no parking? Give you another one. Did you mean it when you said you couldn't put a fence in your front yard? It takes some effort, but sometimes laws need to be changed, and the public debate of those laws results, of those laws, results in a good society moving forward. Okay? And so, the best way to accomplish that would be for council to just do it very nicely. Sometimes it's a little movement, you know?
Can I make one last comment? There's people that have driveways that they can park their cars in, and those are the ones that seem to be bitching. You know? And that's all I wanted to say there.
Sure, and I, I, I'm surprised, I really did appreciate Kathy's comment. Because it made, it made so much sense to me after she said it here. I'm not just here for myself, I'm here for my neighbors. There are a couple of people on this street that are sorely inconvenienced, you and your son being some of them.
Yeah, but there's other people that either rent homes...
That have no need for parking and are simply doing so, including people that are not from Baldwin Street that are parking there.
Yes.
Can I just say one, one last thing, Mike? When I came out of the studio the other night, there was no parking, there was no parking on the side in front of the studio, and it was an absolute racetrack. Cars were flying. So, I would rather someone be inconvenienced for one short second to have to slow down, wait for a car, and there's plenty of room for people. It's just how adept you are at driving, whether you can judge going through, or how big your vehicle is, but it's, you just slow down and let the, it's everywhere, it's everywhere. In Bridgeville, we have little streets in Bridgeville, it's a little town, so that's all, but if, if no parking there, you're going to have a whole lot more problems with cars just flying, because they did the other night when I came down, and I thought, this is not good. This is not good.
What's the argument of people that wanted it to be parked on the side? What does that make a concern? Wanted that in there?
Mainly, cleaning it, cleaning it up, a lot of it was parking on the sidewalks. Another issue that we haven't gotten to is the Wednesdays 9 to noon for the street sweeper. The narrowness of the street was an impediment. One of the issues I had, funny, Kathy, one of the issues that I had told to me was having people park in front of the dance studio, it's not safe for the kids, because they, they have to go out between the parked cars. That was, was told to me as a reason to remove, to enforce the ordinance that was there.
Yes, Joe.
I, I think the parking authority should approach the K-9 club and ask them if they can buy that law off of them, they can have as many spaces as they need, and they...
There, there's, if we wanted to enforce parking, there is parking lots down there, we can tell people to go park.
Yeah.
That's not what we, that's not what these people want. They don't want it that way.
I'm, I'm talking about for the dance studio, like, for her, she can recommend to her clients that they can drop off their students if it's going to be quick, but if they need to go somewhere to park, they can park there and walk down safely without worrying about getting hit by a car.
The K-9 club will not allow me. I'd ask.
No, I, what I said was, what I said was, perhaps maybe the parking authority can purchase that. That's what I said.
Now, Tamalinis was very, I called Tamalinis, they were very, very nice, they said if there's no parking, we could go up on their upper lot. We're talking, you know, and we have the Italian club that grabbed the lot. We basically, maybe a few cars to park there, and that, and again, I'm not, I'm more worried about the man next door to the dance studio than I am myself.
I want to make a comment real quick. With the signs going up and that, with that big stuff happening, this ordinance was already on the books, it wasn't something that we created, it wasn't something we thought of, just like we have people to come in and talk about other ordinances that might not be enforced, we run into the same issue. So for us, if we don't live on Baldwin Street, me personally, I don't, I haven't lived here my whole life, so if I look at something where an ordinance is on the book and someone comes in and complains about it, then we might take some action to it. This is the largest group of people I've seen in the year in the last two years by far. It's generally the same group of people that come in, I like to hear from them every time, but I love hearing from all of you guys, I think this is fantastic. I think it makes my mind, it makes me feel much better knowing any decision I make moving forward based on hearing what you guys are talking about, hearing the pains that you're feeling, because from an outside perspective, if you're just looking at driving down the road, it may seem to an outsider that visually, there's cars on both sides, it seems less safe. Now granted, once I hear the arguments coming from everybody with how they're parking, what they're doing, it certainly would change my attitude, the whole perspective of it. So I just want to reiterate how important it is for you guys to come down, keep coming down, we're here every month, we have a workshop meeting for an hour prior to this, where it's less formal, and you can say and pretty much do whatever you want, we might have a little bit of argument, but you know, we're pretty open to hearing from the public. I mean, it's, it's really difficult for seven people to sit here and make decisions for the entire community without hearing your voices. So I, I just want to say personally that I appreciate you guys all coming down, I really appreciate the feedback, and I'd like to see more of it, because it makes our lives a lot easier to make decisions, if we know what the community wants. I mean, like, like we said there, we had a discussion in the six o'clock meeting, talking about some changes that we want to make, and, you know, there's only so much you can do at one time, so you try to pick the stuff that seems like it's the most urgent at that period of time. Now, we may be missing anything, and that's where it's important for the public, you guys elect us, that's why we're here, we'd love to hear from you and know what the community wants, I appreciate it, I just want to thank you. The only thing I noticed is, nobody came down and complained about that. We didn't have anybody come to the public meeting complaining about that.
Yeah.
So, this was arbitrarily enforced by someone that wanted to change the enforcer. Pardon me? Who?
I'm not, that's what I'm asking, but someone had it.
He's had there at every meeting, no one's come down to complain.
Anyway, there's a motion.
Yeah. Did you finish, Ranger?
If there's a second part, then we'll just do another motion.
I think we got to look into a little different for the cleaning aspect. You're going to put the signs up 9 to 12, and down there where there's no parking, they won't be able to sweep down there, because you have to park a second. They got to change that so they can want to get the guys.
That's a different ordinance than what you're talking about. Yeah.
We got to look into that.
This is different.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion on the same with advertising ordinance right now?
Right. To amend the second motion.
Alright, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Do you want to park on Baldwin Street?
One, or there's three of them, so let's give it up one. One now.
The, uh, the second and third part of this is, this ordinance has been written in different sections that have created some confusion as to when you can park because of street sweeping, and when you couldn't park on the other side. And quite honestly, these two contradict each other. One of them said, you couldn't park on this side from 9 or, yeah, 9 noon, yet you couldn't park on the other side at any time, and it said to park on the other side. So, our recommendation is number one, make a motion to remove the no parking from 9 to 12. And that's what you were in states, right? On Wednesdays?
On Wednesdays.
We move from 9.
We're going to rem, I'm making a motion to remove the no parking from 9 to 12 on Wednesdays on Baldwin Street.
How's it going to clean the street?
The same way they clean every street in this town.
Yeah.
No, no, you're going to be allowed, you're going to be allowed to park, I'm not sure. What do you ask?
Our street, you're allowed to park. Correct. So from 9 to 12, you're allowed to park.
There's certain streets that are, right. There's, I live on a residential street, if there is no, no enforcement under, there's no restrictions. They do.
I believe we should look into this.
Baldwin Street, there are three ordinances. Baldwin Street is the only street in Bridgeville, only street, where there is a specific prohibition, Wednesdays from 9 to noon, you are not permitted to park on Baldwin Street. It's the only street in town that is so designated. There is a third ordinance that deals with street sweeping. I would suggest that, given your, to remove that specific restriction on Baldwin Street makes a lot of sense, because if they decide to sweep the street some other day, there's a law that says you can't park on Baldwin Street from 9 to noon, even if it's not being swept.
It's only on Wednesdays, we know that.
Right.
You park on the other side on Wednesdays.
Now, now, the next piece is the street sweeper, so I would, I would strongly support your, your piece on Wednesdays, because that doesn't make sense.
So, you're going to table this and study it.
Wait for the next one, though. There's a third, but I think it's got to come up.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
The third one is, I'm making a motion to remove the restrictions for parking for street sweeping on Baldwin Street. So, the street sweeper will clean the street, it may have to go around cars like it does on every other street, it will pass with ass lory to instruct the street sweeper to pass as frequently as it is out, to make sure that we get that street as clean as we can, but to, you know, from the Public Safety Committee's standpoint, to try to enforce no parking down there for street sweeping, three ordinances conflicted. You couldn't, you couldn't enforce the way it was written. So, that's my, my third.
And the third motion applies to the entire community?
No, it's to Baldwin Street.
Okay, so, on Baldwin Street, you can park without regard, even if the street sweeper's going to come, but on the other streets in the community?
Listen, we're addressing Baldwin Street because it's thrown out of line.
I understand, but this is...
These people want the street cleaned, you can move them from one side to the other side, one day a week.
Do we have to get people down here from every other street to complain?
No, we as a committee aren't dealing with every other street if you'll let us do it.
Then, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Exactly right.
So, let's, we got to have a day where we're clean each side, move them one side one day, the other side so that we can sweep it. I'm not, everybody down here is trying to take pride in their place, clean.
No one's telling, no one's telling the street department to ignore Baldwin Street.
What are you going to do, zigzag like they've been doing?
That's what they do on every street.
But I don't want them to do it on Baldwin Street. You take the room to get it over one day and pack together.
The committee puts that in form of a motion. There's a motion of the court.
And if that's sweeping, driving, assuming a driving...
Jason, second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Zuroka? Zurok? Jason? Phil?
Yes.
No? Bruce? Yes. Like, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
I'd like to put them down. Except, just saying, we're going to do this on Baldwin Street, when we have not enforced street sweeper ordinance for a law, okay?
We have one.
We do, we have one, and I think they're looking at me saying we should enforce it.
It is a force of law, street.
Nobody's going to...
They just did it now.
I, I can tell you that we have not issued citations for...
I'd have to do that.
I understand who. Some people know, and if they do, that's great, but if they don't, there is no citation issued. So I ask the question, do you mean it when you say that when the street sweeper is supposed to come, people need to move their cars? Do you mean it? And the answer apparently is, it is yes.
You enforce it on Mill Street, make them move their cars and have them move for two years, absolutely out of there.
To me, you follow right. Do you see how, you see how this gets here?
You should just make the ordinance shut.
That's what my suggestion would be, is that they delete the ordinance, or that they enforce the ordinance, including Baldwin Street. But Baldwin Street is only special at the moment because a lot of residents are here. Do we really need the residents from other streets to come here when they get...
Just one comment again on Baldwin Street parking and the street sweeper situation. All the way up one side, the street sweeper can pretty much clean until it passes the bend, okay? All the way down that side, they can street sweep. The only issue is from 6:07 down to the Beer Street, and the cars are infrequently spaced. So, a skilled street sweeper can probably do one of these if he really feels like it. I've been there for almost three years now, I have seen the street sweeper one time, it's the other day. And the street sweeper that I saw the other day was not sweeping, he was driving. So, he was going from some location to another location, even in Baldwin Street.
Something, the street sweeper on Wednesdays, which is the Baldwin Street day, starts at 4:00 a.m., so he, he is there way before...
Well, then the ordinance is, I'm going to point.
Because, because it's the business district, and the business district is Washington Avenue, Baldwin Street, all of those areas, so he's in, it, it doesn't mean that he's down there 4:00 a.m., but he starts a lot earlier than normally, he starts at 4 and works until noon.
Then the ordinance should be picked up.
Well, it may, he's on Washington Avenue at 4:00 a.m.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I heard a few cars on that street at 4:00 a.m. because they're in there. So that's, that doesn't raise a problem, so the gentleman of Public Safety Committee, are you ready? Why haven't you?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm on Baldwin Street, and when it was enforced, we all moved on Wednesdays, those that did move on Wednesdays got tickets and didn't do it on that street. And my street got cleaned, my side of the street. My side of the street, where I live, there's an apartment building, and those cars never moved, okay? And that portion in front of my house never gets cleaned, and in fact, a lot of times the whole area in front of me. And when it was enforced, we, we are paying. And now there's no incentive for anyone to move, and it's my side of the street.
Exactly that point. Do you mean it? If council means it...
They just voted on it.
No, no, I understand. I'm talking about the street sweeper ordinance. Okay? And what they've just suggested is that Baldwin Street be accepted. That they don't have to move. But that the rest of the town does. And I look at that and think, there's no logic.
But the rest of the town doesn't.
I know, but you realize what you're saying.
We're gonna enforce it everywhere, everywhere.
Exactly, everywhere. So just, we're ready for it to be enforced everywhere.
We won't have jump security. We'll have the hour which draws the heat, so we can say we need our minimum pressure. Look at the pieces. All right? To see if they need to be changed or they need to be enforced. Not direct, not direct anybody to enforce them now until they have had a chance. And it might not be this month.
No, it should not. We need to move the street sweeping. Will that be legal, in legal charter? That I can get a copy?
Well, no, it's just like, you, you've had no park, no parking on Baldwin Street for many, many years.
I only found it three years ago.
Well, what I was saying, it was never, it was never enforced. And all of a sudden, you come out one day and there's tickets on your car. We're gonna look into this ordinance as well and, but in the meantime, we're not going to direct hopefully the, or chief of police to enforce this order until he gets direction from either the mayor and/or the-
Then we put into an ordinance for, it's already been voted on. And I'll be able to get a copy. Okay?
What we've done is, we've agreed to advertise it to become an ordinance.
Yeah, well, I didn't see the advertisement, but no parking went on there.
That's because it was already ordered.
We didn't know that.
We weren't aware of that.
Well, that was, that was by order of-
Mike.
That wasn't, that wasn't by order of council.
That wasn't by order of council.
Okay. Yeah, but it doesn't matter. But as long as we got his name solved, that's all that matters.
It's not a song.
Chief Chilia.
How many, wait one minute. Do you want that street swept every week? They might as well sell that street sweeper pump. They're not gonna clean the street.
I lived in Germany for a number of years. They didn't have a street sweeper. They had little old ladies that opened the place, sweep the sidewalks, sweep the perimeter.
You know, they're chained open. I don't like, nine to twelve was a clean day on that side of the street. And it's been that way when I was a kid, and I moved, get guys' cars across the street. But they're gonna take the street sweeping under there. And you know it's gonna happen, they're gonna move. And I know many people got investments in Baldwin Street. The town sure they want it cleaned.
As they're closing it clean. There's a lot of people have investments.
You gotta make it better. It'd be nice, yeah.
We put over a hundred thousand dollars to fix the place up, to make it look like the showcase on the street. Even though it's wrong. When, then when the flood came, with the grace of God, or the devil, I don't know. But very fortunately, we had insurance. We put another hundred thousand or more in. So our investment is a very wise investment. So I'm only speaking up for our investment. And I'll tell you what, if other people wanna put money in and improve the properties, I'll slap on the back, and I'll park someplace else. But, when that's done, and that place is no longer blank, I'll be a happy camper.
That's what I'd like to see, and not being like, that's why I like to keep it.
And I wanted to get that straight about investments, about other people. About other people.
Chief Chilia.
I'm gonna speak as a resident, not as a fire chief. Let everybody know. On this thing with the street sweeper, I've lived on Pennsylvania for many years. Moved to different locations throughout the borough. And I remember growing up and all the way up to just recently, this borough used to enforce the street sweeper, which they still do, by giving warnings. They never cited a resident because they're a taxpayer. They gave a warning about when a street sweeper was coming on their street when they did. And I remember the police going ahead, and I know they still do that here and there when they have time. There's other things that are a little bit more important to be done in this town. But, you know, you're going ahead and they're giving these warnings out, the people would move. The street sweeper would come. If they didn't move, it was a warning. They never enforced a citation because that's what previous councils wanted and everything else. And I totally agree with that. I think that's a smart thing. You got the majority of cars to move. So they did enforce stuff around here, and they have done them. And I'm not just saying that because I'm the fire chief. I'm saying that as a resident, and I don't make that none. I've seen that. You know, so, I grew up on Pennsylvania. We had parking on one side of the street. We had driveways up there, but we made it work. And if they didn't get cleaned, it didn't get cleaned. There was another week or another month. Thank you, though.
I just have one question. What do you have? I'm okay with the ordinance if you, if you do that, the park on the side of the street. But I have nowhere to park. But my, I'm just asking, what I'd be citing?
No, no, I, again, they're gonna look at it.
I mean, I'd be cleaning from my house, no big deal. It's like my sidewalk, you know, and it's-
I've always known about the Brooklyn people. I've gone around to the avenue, there's no place to go.
You know, one thing to take into consideration. A lot of the residents will move, especially with all the businesses on station. We moved two or three vehicles, and the people from the hospital and every place else will wait and park there. Then we can't get back in there. Even though we moved for the street sweeper. So be careful.
Absolutely. Yes, Pat. You don't really mean that you want to issue a ticket with a citation and a fine if somebody, like Joel, is parked and has no place to go? Or somebody is on Station Street, and they don't wanna move because somebody else comes into play? Coming to their place? Because you don't mean what you're saying in your law. That's something that I'm hopeful that the public safety committee will look at over the next month or so. So that your law means what you want it to mean. Right?
I know what you're saying.
Because the idea that you sort of asshole, leave it on the books, and then sort of maybe sometimes do something is, it's just not good. He's gonna look at it.
That was one piece.
You passed two pieces, then you passed a third one that says you're gonna exempt Baldwin Street, the street sweeper. But you're gonna leave, no? Okay? And now you've got one street out of the entire borough that's exempt from an ordinance that you really aren't sure that you wanna enforce in general anymore. So I'm hopeful that the public safety committee will think about either having the ordinance or not having the ordinance.
I think the general intention, and I hope I'm not speaking out of term, was that the public safety committee was helping to look at a group of ordinances that needed to be updated in the first place before all of this started. So that, so that one street is not targeted. But we got into this scenario. So I think it's kind of safety's intention to look at more than one ordinance, look at ordinances that need to be upgraded or updated or whatever. Am I speaking right?
Absolutely right. We stated that at our public safety meeting, I stated it tonight. We want to look at all the ordinances in this community that may not make sense today, that were written years ago.
Can't you do that overnight?
Stick around for our fifteen minutes, and we'll be done.
I'd just like to ask you a question. The ordinance gives the police the right to put the warning tag? What is the fine if they chose to?
It's a borough tag.
It fits a borough tag, I believe it's either fifteen or twenty-five dollars. But what it comes down to is, and I'll address this a little more when I give my speech about this, because after that, quite frankly, it's a dead issue, and it's not gonna be debated. But when it comes to the street sweeping, I can speak for sixteen to seventeen years, I never issued a ticket on Baldwin Street for street sweeping or a general pardon violation, okay? We rely a lot on communication from the individual, the street sweeping the streets, to get back to us and let us know if there's problematic areas, which there are. But we have to look at each street differently, because each street has its own problems. A lot of them are narrower than others. When you get up in the area of Ramsey, Patterson, St. Clair Street, a lot of those people have nowhere else to park. They don't have driveways, okay? So we use our discretion, and I'm not going to write a resident a ticket if they don't have anywhere else to go. Getting off subject a little bit, I can tell you that in the past five years, maybe six years, the busiest shift in the borough for us now in the police department is daylight and first half of three to eleven. And quite frankly, I'm more interested in dealing with the fords of drugged out, whacked out, drug-induced zombies we have coming into town for our treatment clinics, and I am worried about parking problems.
Amen.
The amount of crime we're getting from these clinics and the people that come to them is just overwhelming. And that's what we have to focus on right now. Some of you might not wanna hear that, but facts are facts. So, but I say, I'll address it more whenever it's my turn to speak.
We move on to Mayor Lazie.
Sure. Very quickly, a letter here from South Fayette Township. On Saturday the eighteenth, Saturday July eighteenth, at approximately three o'clock, the South Fayette Police Department was notified by Duncan City Oklahoma Police Department the day along with Norman Oklahoma FBI had pinged the individuals a cellphone in the area of Knights Inn at Avery Reed Road. And on behalf of the South Fayette Township Police Department, their chief would like to express gratitude for Ridgeville officers Buchakowski and Manalakis's assistance in searching the area where the suspect's location was reported to be. After a brief search of the area, further investigation found that the suspect was in a room at Knights Inn with a fourteen-year-old female. Our officer, our Ridgeville officers assisted in setting up the perimeter of the area. And it is a very good testament, not just to our officers, but to the cooperation that our department, from our officers to our chief, have with their counterparts in South Fayette. And it's a very nice and good relationship. Thank you, Pat. Please, Chief.
Thank you, Council President. Just to touch quickly on the Baldwin Street, like I said, after this, obviously, the rules are gonna change, and the laws are gonna change, and it's going to be a dead issue. But just to try to simplify and make it more understandable, because there's a lot of back and forth that was going on between the members that were here tonight and the council members. We refer to Baldwin Street, the north side being the creek side. That has always been no parking down there. And there has been signs there for years. But before the decision was made to start enforcing that with warnings, we added more signage to try to get people's attention. There was always signs up there, and there were curbs, we were painting yellow. Granted, they faded, but in the areas where parking won't be allowed, they will be repainted. Dealing with that, the other side of Baldwin Street, the south side, which is the kennel side. The way this is going to be set up now is, if I understand it correctly, parking on the south side, which is the kennel side, will be allowed where it was always allowed, except that it will not run into the block and run road. It will have a cutoff point prior to the Bridge six six six. Parking on the north side will go from six oh seven to twenty feet short of the exit for the beer warehouse. That way, the parking is staggered. You will not have an area where cars are parked directly across from one another on that street. It's gonna be up here and down here. That in and of itself, as somebody mentioned earlier, will act as a traffic calming situation, will help slow traffic down because you're gonna have staggered parking. There will not be an area, hopefully, where people don't park across from one another. If they are, there are violations, somebody's parking in an area they shouldn't be. Along with that, we talked about this in the public safety meeting earlier, that what we will enforce is traffic that parks against traffic. If you're going to park there, you will park with traffic. I understand your sentiment, but you also said fifteen minutes before that that you only see one or two vehicles on that street. Okay? So you will park with traffic, you will not park on the sidewalk on Baldwin Street. When it comes to parking on sidewalks, it's a lot like the street sweeper issues. There are certain areas in town, we use our discretion, we don't enforce it. Baldwin Street is wide enough with staggered parking that you will not have to park on the sidewalk there. Are there any questions as far as parking on Baldwin Street? And it's an issue after tonight, it's going to change. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, yeah, my report, just to summarize the most we did earlier to advertise a public hearing for the zoning ordinance update. The mayor's report actually has a pretty nice summary in it of some of the highlights of it. But just for folks' information, we had been commissioned along with our consultant, the planner commission, to create some updates to the zoning warrants, particularly focusing on the business district, mixed-use district, loosening, not making them more flexible. We're dealing with perhaps aged or risen on height. And dealing with those and a number of other things. They did some particular things with the overlight on Baldwin Street area. They're kind of, kind of different, a little bit of a business district that has been made in Washington Avenue. By and large, just as a crack, as a procedural matter, the planning commission has recommended that we advertise the ordinance here in public hearing. We can do that no sooner than thirty days from when it goes down to the county for review. So we would anticipate it's probably gonna be closer to nearly five days from the day the planning commission could get up and give the consultant time to finalize a couple of tweaks. She got clear marching orders on this to conform the planning commission's final recommendation, she needs to do that. So she does that with your motion already made. You can self-execute, send that to the county for the review and then schedule a hearing. I would envision would be no later plan. October or April. Probably keep on making this a temporary area name, so unless she did a special one, we'll probably not. That, that's time. Otherwise, I just wanted to report too that the second phase of the consent decree that we are to be the city service system is under review by a core group of solicitors, but there's much of us are part of, and we may actually promote this solicitor tomorrow. There's a huge number of people involved in review, and there's gonna be a package for it with the regulator. So you'll probably be presented with updates and requests to actually look at and consider the final order. Probably with October or September. The mayor asked us, and that was probably gonna be October or September on that. On the zoning front, finally, sorry, the mayor also had, for you, your request, we had followed up on the comprehensive plan that we're wanting to get to the zoning amendments we want right now. It also requested, and calling face to face to, not the special order, just because you have to face this. Baldwin, the block and area, we've asked for a, proposed, we're even close to consider to have a kind of targeted neighborhood planning. Would you have done of that, and then another part of the community that could still afford? Do you have any questions on this?
And just as a note, there was a budget of twenty thousand dollars this year for these type of plans. So the zoning thing that we're doing now, and if you include these, your people's supposed to stay within budget.
That's right.
Be up, be up there in the comprehensive plan for these.
Different stuff.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item I have is the two thousand fifty paper maintenance program. We have a contract executed, I'll grant you to the program. That's the New American Water Company. Contract passed with Coliseum completed, the Ridgeville Water Manager placed a report last Friday. And we'll be having a pre-construction meeting with Al Brandy. Then the next week, we get the remainder of the project started, so we'll see more activity there. The Contract B project, the Ohio Hill Road, contract that was signed by TA Robinson, and it'll be returned for execution by the borough once they're executed. We've got a pre-construction meeting scheduled with that. The New York Storm Sewer, completed an existing condition survey for the design- The New York Storm Sewer, completed an existing condition survey for the design of the storm sewer replacement and upgrade. Ran some numbers today and looked at it and what we're using for finding here. If we were to replace that sewer line with another fifteen-inch sewer, that would be about a hundred twenty-five thousand. But my feeling is that we need to upsize that sewer since you have more development in that watershed, so the maximum would be probably somewhere in there with about two-hundred thousand dollars. So we've got seven hundred and fifty feet of storm sewer pipe there, would have to be replaced by a large jaw, maybe even something we might want to phase over a couple of years if we decide to proceed with it. So I'll have you a better number for next one today. We're here in New York.
And just as a note, we have this TV camera committee, and we also cleaned the line. That was a line that hadn't been cleaned in years, and we haven't had any issues, even with all the rain, since we did that, so.
No wash. Yeah. On the capacity issue, because as the manager just pointed out, we need it. When you're doing your analysis, do you have some ideas to one hundred years, five hundred years? More than the fifteen-inch line and the number more we're getting put on there?
Yes.
So the status quo would result in possible flooding at this point, fifteen-inch line point.
Right. To get that to come out, they have to show. We approved the payment for the home operation maintenance to Sewer Line. We're having a pre-construction meeting with Jet Jack on the lining contract on Thursday this week. The Indiana Sewer for two minutes, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting on July twenty-second with automated interest systems. They ordered the equipment and wanted to receive those through the installation. And last was the Charlotte Street, Washington Avenue, Charlotte Street group intersection meeting. We'll give you this update, we did get a notification from the Alligating County Development Authority that the grant submitted that was to be paid from the gaming funding met the program eligibility criteria, but since there was a significant number of applications that exceed the amount of available funds, cars could not be funded at this time. They were very positive in their response, they encouraged that the grant application we submitted during the spring of 2016 was a submission period of backup. So I think that's good news we have on that front. And I think the worry we've got is Pendy, because the money just needs to be found to get these projects going. They encourage that we get a shovel-ready project, ready, get it designed, and then when the money comes down the pipeline, we're ready to go. So that's all I can do. I've got a detail coming tomorrow, Bill, and I'll walk down and see you.
My, I just have a comment related to our engineers' report. I forgot to mention, the purpose of that four-hundred family traffic survey that we sent out, it fills with information yet that we're all concerned about. All of those people have responded, all sort of have been detouring around the Washington new route fifty intersection there by the McDonald's, about the church, been there fifteen years. So any traffic studies that are conducted by Pendy must be viewed with, they're not being accurate, and the number of people actually using that intersection is probably nothing with the any study resulted ship. Thanks for the.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Fire Chief, Chilio.
Thanks, Mr. President. But first, apologize for last being putting you guys on the spot there with my report and with that for the fire. But I appreciate you guys finishing what you did on that. Thank you. I wanted to make sure I get that now. A couple of things. One, as everybody probably, if you haven't noticed, when they put the new water line in down at Bridge Road, we added a fire hydrant down at the bottom end of Bridge in McLaughlin. We really, I've noticed over the years, I've always keep an eye out because there really was nothing there. I have a good connection with the water company, and when that stuff's going on, we'll move hydrants, we're at hydrants to better accommodate the people in their areas. So throughout the years, you will see those happen throughout the time if they are replacing the lines. So just so everybody knows, we did add something down there that will help us. Two, the ladder truck is in service. I wouldn't have been able to use it, which is good. We had our training last month, everything went good, the people were driving it, getting used to it, and getting very comfortable with it. So it is now officially in service for the community and wherever else needs us. Do want to let you guys know one thing with my report that you see, you'll probably be seeing now, if you notice, some street things in there. We see in Robinson Township. We are responding now into Robinson Township for right now, that when the one fire station had the fire about a month ago, they lost their air truck. So we are running into Robinson Township with our rescue, because they're one of the worst parts. I've accommodated them for air. So we don't know how long it is, but that's what we're all here for. You know, we have a piece of equipment, anybody's welcome to use it. Last thing I have is, we have going on next month, and it's probably a good thing for the town. We are doing a fundraiser next month. I've got some tickets here for twenty bucks. We're doing a comedy night, something different. Nice night out, September twelfth is when we got, I think it's up to three comedians will be there, so be a good night out. Somebody looking for something to do. Come see me or see one of the people, and we're trying something different. Sounds good. I mean, it's starting to take off, so I will say that. So if somebody's looking for a good night out, come on down, you know, does include beverage into for twenty bucks. Can't go anywhere for twenty dollars. That's three drinks. So.
That's it.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Dan's on your end, right?
No, he's at work. He text me.
Do you have anything for him?
I don't. He hasn't sent anything.
And I'll see Becky from the library. All right. Borough manager.
I provided a brief report on the council, if any questions regarding the area. Just as a note, the planning update, when we received the draft back with the recommendation from the Plan Commission, and with the updates from the planning consultants, you'll all receive copies of that, and that will show you what is being changed so that you're aware of what was there and what is proposed to be changed, so that there are any questions regarding that. And I think the only other thing that I have is the publication, which is the update of our zoning ordinances, you know, ours from last year are now available online. Go onto richwellborough.com and go into the code E360, and all of those zoning ordinances are on there periodically. I sent ordinances into updates so that everybody has access online. We also have paper copies here, so if anybody is interested in those, but other than that, there are some that we have.
Full business, anyone? New business.
I do have, George, Washington Avenue, before they come through, okay? The connection for the streetlights across a number of the hair, are you set to put those connections in before they pass?
Or connection.
Across Washington Avenue, they put boxes so that they can make the, they can connect the both sides of Washington Avenue, the streetlights. You remember what I'm talking about?
No.
Maybe talking about the power that they live in the street sweep.
Exactly. Joe, you know what I'm talking about? Where they put the boxes so that they can connect them to the map, each side be fitted with the fed by their own power source. And station.
In the sidewalk?
Yeah, they're in the sidewalk, they're waiting for the, for a connection across the street.
We haven't had a plan to do that.
You've got boxes sitting.
There's boxes there, but they're supposed to exist in here now.
No, in the middle of the walk, right in front of where I am, and on the, on the other side, I think right in front of where Sauce is.
No, we've never had a plan to do that yet. And we never talked about excavating the road.
Richie, that was a little bit of a post office call.
Yeah.
We never had any.
We've only funded two forest stores.
Yeah, we never had any plans in our, in our street sweep, our deck.
I think the pipes are there, but I just thought.
What's in the box?
It's just the tower.
Yeah, let me ask you this, George. I don't, if it's not cleared, it's not supposed to be there, then fine. But if, would you mind kicking a look at it, Joe? And so that we don't miss the opportunity, but it is supposed to be out. The other thing is, what are you doing as far as EPD? I'm sorry, the neighborhood studies.
We just talked about that. We're to bring up next meeting, please. We're, we're proposing.
Okay, so you're taking one of them?
Yes. He has it all.
Waiting for the next meeting. It's not really cool.
All right. Some motion, Mr. Roger, Bruce, Jason, all those are favor. I, all those are opposed. Thank you, everybody.